Listening to your goals and dreams is our top priority at West Tennessee Bank. Benefit from our more than 100 years of experience and visit our Henderson branch today. West Tennessee Bank, focused on you. West Tennessee Bank is a division of Decatur County Bank, equal housing lender, member FDIC.
We have a full presence, so our meeting is officially now called to order. Our first item on the agenda is a recommendation to accept the board agenda. Before we do that, I would like to entertain a motion that we move our delegations to number 11, in case there's any here tonight, and then have officially noted in our agenda that we have a discussion and an update for our school system on the current COVID situation. So I would like to have someone entertain that in the form of a motion.
I make a motion we do.
Second.
Our motion has been made and seconded to add that. So do I hear any discussion at all? All right, if there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, with that being said, let's go ahead and approve the full agenda. Do I hear a motion that we do now accept the board agenda with those addendums?
I make a motion we accept the board agenda.
I second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, it is now set and approved. Next on our agenda tonight is approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. There is no discussion on that, so all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, it is approved. All right, our first item tonight is spotlight and celebrations. And I know we have a lot to celebrate here at Chester County Junior High. Troy, I'm going to turn that over to you and have you introduce our guest tonight.
Thank you very much. It is my pleasure to start this cycle for this school year where, and I'll say Mr. Norris Frank, I think initiated this request, that we locate at the school sites specifically to have these meetings so we can learn from the great things happening at Chester County Junior High. At first, I was told that only Mr. Jared Schumate, who's dean of students, was going to be here, but look and behold, we have all three rock stars. We have Dr. Belinda Anderson in the back as our building principal, and Mr. Todd Lewis, assistant principal, who are all here. Todd is double dipping now with his duties with Eagle Vision Network, which is one of those exciting things that happens at the junior high every day. And we're very pleased with the opportunity to be able to have a more state-of-the-art recording and presentation live streaming, which we are live streaming through their Facebook page, correct?
YouTube channel.
YouTube channel, wow, step up. All right. So I'm turning this over to Mr. Schumate. Is that correct?
Nope, obviously it's Dr. Anderson.
Dr. Anderson.
Mr. Schumate's still out with a student.
Okay, very good.
Dr. Maurice, do you have a video that he sent you? Could you help us out with that? We do have a student spotlight this evening, and it's just about our students, and that's simply what it is. If you look over here at EVN, you'll see two fine young men doing the videoing and actually working the board, and they do that every day for EVN. And then EVN put together a video of our students, and they're just talking about the junior high and how they feel about it, and that's our spotlight for this evening. Can you see, Dr. Maurice, or do you need a light back on for you?
Yeah, I can see him.
Help out people.
Okay.
Listen in class.
I think you have to support your peers and be nice to everybody.
To me, having Eagle pride is like showing, being good to the teachers and being good to your classmates and being good in school and just being good all around, in school and out of school, and just showing Eagle pride.
Eagle pride means to be a good leader for the school and to show that you have good support for the school and that you can give other people Eagle pride by showing your own Eagle pride.
To show school spirit and just to know how much the school has grown over the past three years.
I think that when you bring like honor to your school, you have courage to do what you think you can't do, but you are willing to do it.
I feel welcomed. Best junior high ever. It's very fun being here. I enjoy school.
My teachers, my administrators, and my peers.
To me, what makes me proud to be part of the CCJHS family is probably the amount that the school has grown in a whole and how much the school has just grown from each person directly with their grades and just everyone in school together.
Okay.
I'm proud to be a part of the CCJHS family because of the people that are in the CCJHS school. They're all good people and they're all kind, and it's very good to be around people that show that they're a good leader, too.
How the teachers helped me to know I have a place and that I belong here.
The great school academics they have, it's a very good school of teaching. It has a bunch of fun things to do here. Like honestly, my other schools were pretty boring. And the teachers are really fun, really eager. They're always good at teaching things that you don't know, and they're always willing to help. And the different clubs and the different things you can do here, it's really nice.
For the evening, it's just our students. We're very proud of them, very proud of what they're doing. We have an excellent staff here, excellent faculty, and we couldn't be more proud to be Eagles. So thank you all so much for being here this evening, and thank you for allowing us to host here.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda tonight is our selection. It's September is the month that we select our board chair, vice chair, and our Tennessee Legislative Network representative. And for that, I'm going to turn it over to our vice chairman, Norris Frank.
Okay. Nominations are open for the chairman of the Chester County School Board. Do I hear a nomination?
I nominate Shane Connor.
Shane Connor is the nominee. Any other nominations? Nomination is closed? I don't think there, is there a need for acclamation or any vote or anything?
It would be by acclamation if there's no other nominees.
By acclamation.
Okay. All right, with that being said, we will now open the floor for nominations for the vice chair of the Chester County School Board.
I nominate Norris Frank.
All right, Norris Frank has been nominated as our vice chairman. Are there any other nominations? All right, if there are no other nominations, Norris Frank would be selected by acclamation as well to continue as vice chairman. We also each year have a Tennessee Legislative Network representative through the TSBA to keep us in touch and informed with legislative issues in Nashville. And now the floor is open for our nomination for our TLN representative.
I nominate Becky Hutcheson.
Second.
Okay, nomination's been made and seconded. Is there any other nominations? All right, easy enough, then. Just assumed, I didn't ask, Norris and Becky, are you guys willing to serve? Okay, so all by acclamation then, our chair, vice chair, and TLN representative are set for the upcoming year. Next up tonight is our district and school TCAP and EOC student performance results, and I'll have Mr. Kilzer introduce that tonight.
It is my pleasure. Again, we've had to sit on this data for several weeks because of it being embargoed. The state made a release of statewide data earlier. I don't want to take any fanfare away from what Dr. Maurice is going to share with us. Dr. Maurice and his role of testing coordinator for the district has been very much involved in our benchmark formative assessments through the course of the year that gives us the direction to go to remedy shortcomings, shortfalls with our student performance. And then in addition to our efforts here, and as I have shared with some of you individually, Chester County Schools during this last year's unique COVID year, because of our efforts to go to school from August the 10th to the end of that school year for that full-term in-person education, made a significant difference in the education for our students in comparison to the other districts who felt like they could not do it that way. Hats off to our school leaders, to our school staff, not only our educators, but everybody had to join hands and take an active role, including our support staff personnel, our cafeteria staff, our custodians, bus drivers, maintenance, everybody had to join hands and do things in that unique way and the different way, but so that we could continue to offer a quality education for our students. And again, in comparison to the work up front of us, you're going to notice that in the comparison to other districts, that Chester County fared extremely well. We have areas to fix, but we are very proud of the accomplishments of what we were able to do last year. Dr. Maurice is going to take over, and with a man dressed like he is, he's demanding presence. He's got his power suit on, so we're ready to learn.
Good evening. I want to say thank you to the board for the opportunity to present our data tonight. I want to kind of start by talking about what this data actually is, because I think a lot of times we get lost in numbers. When the state made their presentation about TCAP and EOC data, it was different. It was very, the word catastrophic was used. The amount of learning loss across the state was significant. We knew that was coming, and so we took preventative steps early. The decision was made to give a gap assessment. We wanted to know when we resumed school where our students were so that we could meet them and help them rise to the levels that they needed to be at. And so through doing that, I think what you'll see is, based on the work of our educators, based on the work of our school leaders, the boots on the ground in these buildings, and our kids, these scores represent our kids. This is a community of effort, and I focus on the fact that these are our children. And our mission as educators is to make sure that our kids benefit. I can't compliment the board enough for your decision to have in-person learning. It's the right call. I speak from personal experience when I say I was the kid that needed to be in school. I needed to be here for more than just an education. School was the place that I was safe. School was the place where I was fed. School meant something to me, and so the decision to open our doors and be there for our community is about much more than just education. So when we look at these scores, we're looking at people, we're looking at children, and we're looking at the work, the diligent work, the extremely difficult work that all people involved in the district put forth last year, from building principals, district leaders, teachers, parapros, bus drivers. The work was difficult, but it was worth it. And so I'm excited to share these results with you today. So I've broken it into three parts for you. The first part, we're going to look at TCAP ACH, grades three through eight. When you see ACH, that means achievement. We're going to look then at high school, the TCAP EOCs. Those are end-of-course assessments, so at various milestones, the state measures the mastery of our students at high school. Those are referred to as end-of-course assessments. And I want to make special mention of the new product from the state, the Family Portal. So starting with TCAP, our grades three through eight, when we look at three through eight mathematics, as you can see, in all grades, Chester County was above the state OTM percentage. When we look at OTM, that's taking the top two categories of on-track and mastery, which is where we want our students to be. We combine those, and when we combine those categories and compare ourselves to the state, we were above the state in every grade level three through eight mathematics. Sixth and seventh grade math saw some growth from 2019, where all across the state, we saw significant learning loss, or sixth and seventh grade saw growth. Third grade math at East Chester, we want to make special mention of, met double AMO. AMO is what the state considers one year of progress. They met double in a pandemic, in a difficult year. And I think that is something very, very much to be celebrated and to compliment the work of the educators at East Chester. Continuing on to our English Language Arts, again, in all grades three through eight, Chester County was above the state average for on-track and mastery. Fourth grade ELA saw growth from 2019. Literacy is where we've been focused, it's where the state is focusing. It's critical for our young people. Literacy connects into every single subject. So one of our focuses is on that early foundational literacy skills, making sure that our kids have those skills necessary to become lifelong learners. Again, third grade, East Chester, four ELA, not AMO, but double AMO. So again, it's something that's significant, and I want to make special recognition of that tonight. Continuing on to our three-eight science, we did not have a data return in 2019 for science. The standards had changed, so the assessment had changed. That was not a year that data was returned to us. Again, in all grades, Chester County was above the state average on-track and mastery. And looking finally for six-eight social studies, social studies is paused for grades three, five right now. It may come back in the next few years and it may not, we don't know yet, but right now it is definitely paused. In all grades, again, for social studies, six through eight, Chester County was above the state on-track mastery percentage. Grades six and seven saw growth from 2019. So in a year where everyone is telling us you're going to see significant learning loss, I think the decision to come to school is what made the difference. Our kids were here and they benefited, and we did not see what the state described as catastrophic learning loss, which is significant. That's something to definitely be celebrated. Looking now at our high school EOC for mathematics, Algebra I and Geometry were above the state on-track mastery percentage. Geometry actually met double AMO. So again, not just one year of progress, but twice that. Both Algebra I and Geometry saw growth from the 2019 school year. So again, significant results presented in a year where we were told it wasn't possible. Well, in Chester County, it was, and it was because of the dedication of our educators, our school leaders, our students, and our families. For EOC Language Arts, in all grades, Chester County was above the state on-track mastery percentage. English I actually saw a 4.1% increase in performance from 2019, and it depends upon where the state makes the cutoff. It's going to come down to a decimal point, but it's very likely that English I will have met AMO. Looking at our U.S. history, in U.S. history, we were again above the state on-track mastery percentage. U.S. history met double AMO. Again, scoring significantly higher than three-fourths of other districts in the state. U.S. history actually saw 7.9 points of growth from 2019. That's significant. It's difficult to get that kind of growth in a regular school year. To do that in a pandemic is quite impressive. Our U.S. history has always been an area where we have excelled, and we've continued to do that. So we've got a lot to celebrate with our high school folks. In biology, there was no return for 2019. Again, the science standards have changed, and standard setting occurred this year. If you look, we didn't quite meet the state on-track mastery percentage, but we're not far off. One point. And to me, that's also impressive. When that's a brand-new test, newer standards, newer rigorous assessments, that's an impressive piece as well. Final thing I want to look at is the TCAP Family Portal. This is something that we've shared with our families. It's a new application put out by the Department of Education. The department wanted to provide families with a place that's online that would house historical data for their learners. And so now families are able to go to this website using their student's ID number, which comes on their paper score reports that schools are sending home, and they're able to create an account and track their student year after year. Something that's been promised to us for several years now, and now it's a reality. And I can tell you, it's a good portal. The data that's there is excellent. There's another side to that, which is the educator portal, and our teachers will have access to that same data so that they can look at their students, look at their students historically, look at how their students performed in prior school years, and make excellent decisions to inform their lesson planning and instruction for our learners. Again, we looked at TCAP grades three through eight, high school EOCs, and we finished up with the Family Portal. Any questions?
The one question I have is, family performance, are they very secure?
Yes, they have to undergo the rigorous online security protocols from the Department of Education. So they're state-level security.
And you would have to know your student's ID number before you can gain access to it. So it's private in that matter, too.
If there's no questions, that's all I have for you. I appreciate your time. I thank you for giving us this opportunity, and I hope you see that the efforts that our educators and our school leaders have gone through this past school year has definitely paid off for our district and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maurice.
All right, our next item we're going to look at tonight is our Policy Subcommittee met recently, and there's a recommendation from that committee for some changes in current board policy, and we'll look through those, and I'll let you give the highlights, Troy, and then we'll look at approving those.
Okay. Board members, just briefly, and again, the subcommittee that makes up our policy committee are Ms. Becky Hutcheson and Mr. Mark Griffin. It was a shorter list as compared to what we looked at last month, but of these four, the first one briefly, the Homebound Instruction, which is 4.206, it was just an inclusion of the opportunity for those students who, due to a COVID contact trace, who would, a student would have to result in a quarantine setting, allow those students to be given the distance learning opportunities for instruction under the Homebound Services. If you recall, back in June of 2020, we were already thinking in those thoughts prior to partnering with an outside vendor for our virtual learning. So the State Department and the TSBA have revised this one to include that opportunity. Then the Virtual Education Program, 4.212, was just for a policy to stand to allow us as a school district to utilize technology for distance learning. The TSBA felt like it was necessary to give that policy the language within there, and you have seen that policy. It is an inclusion of a new policy, but it's, for us, it would be, since we're using that in our distance learning format, it gives us some more tangible steps and processes and checks along the way. Policy 4.602, Class Ranking, this was a missed policy. Dr. Jill Faulkner recognized that when we transitioned from the high school, from a trimester schedule back to the semester schedule, I thought that we had covered all of our trimester language and replaced that with a semester language. This was one that was overlooked. She discovered that a couple of weeks ago, hence the reason why it's included. And as you see in the language of your agenda, for any student aspiring to be considered for the valedictorian, salutatorian, we have in our policy to reflect that the students now needs to demonstrate, or at least have record with Chester County High School, five of the eight semesters have to be while they're attending Chester County School. And then finally, the last policy revision is 5.106 and 5.118, both of those policies. There is no change with 5.118, which deals with the background investigations, but again, in my error, when we did last month accept the revision from the TSBA for their draft for the adjustment to the 5.106, we did not, I did not see at that time where we need to have both of these policies speak in the same language, that when we seek applicants for a job with Chester County Schools, remember the background investigations are required now by law every five years. And what this policy reads is rather than the board shall reimburse, we're saying the board may reimburse. So it's just a slight language change. The purpose for that slight language change, because it's happened more recently than not, is we've had applicants who have been interested in filling out an application for a job, we send them to go get their background check done, and then paying that because of the shall instead of the may, then they have come back to us and changed their mind and never take the job. So we've given them a background check with no responsibility on the applicant's side of fulfilling that obligation. So our policy 5.118 reflects it the way we'd like both policies to read, which simply says that we would remove the word shall and replace it with may, which means that we can still do the same thing, but it gives us the flexibility of saying that we don't have to.
Troy, you pay or employed by us, do we pay their...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, for all those who, everybody has to do a re-up every five years, but we not only pay the cost of it, we pay them the mileage to go there to and from, either Jackson or Savannah, the last time we were doing it.
Since these recommendations do come from the Policy Subcommittee, it requires no second. Is there any additional discussion about any of the policies that were mentioned?
Shane, I noticed on the Class Ranking, page two, that we policy 4.602, in the agenda, it's written correctly, saying the salutatorian, valedictorian, salutatorian, student must be enrolled at Chester County for at least five of the eight semesters. On page two, it says four of the five semesters.
Okay. Becky, all I can say is, based on the recommendations from my conversation with Dr. Faulkner, we were saying five of the last, of the eight. So what we will do is make both of those consist of, thank you for catching that.
Any other discussion or questions?
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other discussion or questions on any of those, we'll just approve all of them at one time. All those in favor of approving all those recommendations from the Subcommittee, say aye. Any opposed? They are approved. All right, next on our agenda this evening, we do have just some reflections of a meeting at our Capital Projects Subcommittee. They also had a recent meeting, and just wanted to share some of the things that were discussed there.
Okay, and again, it's more of informal. There was no plans for action to be taken. There are actions that will impact the first of these bulleted items, but in the first bullet, talking about the replacement of the outside portable structures at Jacks Creek, we had discussed about changing or purchasing new outside portables. That was, first conversation was back in really 2020, prior to the pandemic and the closure. And then last year, we didn't, we talked about it, but we didn't bother visiting it for unsure about where those funds would come from. We are having in our S or three plan that's been submitted, the opportunity for us to fund that building... fund that building project, which will, in the efforts, will be to replace the existing sites at Jax Creek on the north side closer to Highway 100, and then remove on the south side the existing library structure, and making that a part of a structure on the north side. So our library were moved from the south side to the north side with new upgraded equipment. We, I talked to Debbie Hames today, who's been at that campus since '86, and those portable buildings have been there before she started working here. So I know it's been there since '86, maybe before that. And then we've also talked about work to be done for the cafeteria area that the Jax Creek students and staff use. So again, we will be funding that pending approval from the state, pending approval from the board and the county commission for acceptance of that application. The other bulleted items are conversations that we've talked about, and this would be once we get closer to the conversation being something that we have plans in place, next steps, these following three would be funded through our general purpose fund balance. That would be our plan. The first one, again, being paid with ESER III. These last three would be considerations for, like for the second one, an expansion of two of our CTE programs. Our newest addition, which I say addition, our newest revision with our agriculture program. We've had a very large increase of students participating in our agriculture program. And again, the utility of their work has been either in the classroom, what we call the garden shed, which is behind the Eagle's Edge. But we're looking at possibly some moving from the conceptual thought to taking some definite action to improve and use the former Highway Department property that we own right there next to the Sealy purchase, and utilize those, that area, which is approximately three acres, for a metal-type structure that offers the bay wind, or the bay doors for the ag program, and a structure that will give more working space for these two programs to thrive. The awning installation at the high school, we've also talked about some additional awning additions at East Chester. We did utilize some new, doing some more concrete work, making a longer pad to afford another location for the kids to be able to get on the bus or be picked up in the afternoon. But we've also had through some of the work with our SPED program services to have some additional awnings to allow a covered location for our students who are in special needs, and it takes longer for them to get into their transportation to and from. These projects may be funded through ESER III, but again, it's based on the availability of the funds and the approval. Then finally, the last one, we've talked about Williams Auditorium, because we've spent some of our resources there to improve the actual setting of Williams. But the lobby and the bathrooms have yet to have any upgrade. So again, we had initially thought about utilizing the ESER funds for the Williams Auditorium improvement, but because of the availability of doing other things that seems to fit the ESER plan better, we have resorted to selecting the use of our general purpose fund balance for the improvement at Williams Auditorium. Britt, do you have anything you want to add to, anything that I've said?
Currently, I'm in talks for the Jax Creek project with a modular classroom company. Once we, we're trying to get some specs and plans so we can take it to bid. We thought we were going to be able to buy on a bike cooperative, but using federal funds, there's some stipulations on what it's going to cost, and what they, they say we have to bid, we're going to bid. Getting pricing on the awnings that we're supposed to go around, so I should have that pretty soon. Haven't had any discussions with anybody about Williams. What was the other project?
It was the CTE programs on the.
Okay, and we've been, of course, with Capital Committee and so forth, we, I don't think we've gone too much further than when we were coming here with it. And then from there, I guess we needed more of that conversation soon about taking that to more visual plans and see where we have to go with Fire Marshal and how it works with that.
Any other questions about any of those projects? There's no action on that, it's just kind of an update for the board. All right, if not, we'll go to item number 10, which is, we've referred to it several times in that conversation, but we do have a recommendation for board approval of the ESER 3.0 application. And Troy, give us some background about that.
Just real quickly, the ESER III, this was the last of three funding streams from the federal government that we are utilizing for, again, majority of it is for the learning laws and for all the capital projects, all of the activities that we deem as a district necessary for us to continue to offer the best education possible, given the circumstance of the pandemic that we are dealing with. We have had multiple meetings with different groups. We have solicited in the community stakeholders opportunities for them to voice their opinions about how to utilize these resources. Again, every time there is a federal opportunity for grant or funding, it always comes with a catch. So it doesn't give you the luxury of spending exactly where you want to or think best. You have to stay within the scope of their expectations. The actual deadline for submission is not until the end of the month, so it'd be next Friday. But Mr. Fenimore has submitted the plan recently. And again, but we're waiting for approval. It can be approved as it's read, or it can be non-approved, but they give you either sometimes very minuscule type of tweaks to make it better, approved, or sometimes major. But again, Mr. Fenimore has been very active in many years dealing with the federal budgets, the work that he does through all of our title programs. Ms. Parker deals with the IDA or the special ed federal programs. But both of those staff have had years of experience dealing with the submissions of plans, budgeting, and all the site, the extra work related to it to provide assurances of it. So it, you know, again, it's my recommendation to you as board that you accept the work that's been done, because it is part of the assurances that we have to have for this ESER III.
Is there a recommendation or a motion that we approve this recommendation for the board approval for the ESER III application?
I make the motion that we recommend the approval of the ESER III application.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And it is approved. Our last business item tonight is we did drop our delegations down to our item number 11. There are no delegations that were listed to come before the board tonight, but we do have a time for public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board? All right, if not, we did mention that we would just get an update from our school system, and I know there's a concern just across the board in the country about the latest COVID update and just kind of our situation currently in Chester County. So Troy, I'll let you kind of draw attention to that and give us an update.
Well, I offered a brief explanation when I gave you your board packet. Again, this is a, still a unique situation that we're in, and as I have shared my conversation with many other directors in our Southwest Core region, we all have even less assurance of what tomorrow will hold. As you have seen in the conduct of state government and federal government now, there's a lot of politics involved. But again, our effort as a school district would be to focus on what is most important, which is making sure that we're still going to have a safe, nurturing environment for our students, and a safe, clean, nurturing environment for our staff to continue to work. This, this year's with the Delta variant is different than last year's. It does seem to, as my data reflects to some of your information or reporting out, that there has been an increase in the number of students who have had active cases identified. We have still, as what we did last year, our school nurses are working diligently, many cases working beyond their regular workday to identify those contacts that need to be contacted and informed, that it is our recommendation that they quarantine outside. Just today, I took advantage of the time that I had, because every school nurse, as they generate these contact tracing lists, they share the list with the Health Department Director and me. And giving you guys and lady an overview of what we have had since our start of this school year thus far, and again, these numbers reflect what I had last night, because I received two contact tracing lists at about 7:30 last night. So that kind of gives you a clue that our school nurses are working beyond their regular days. And we compensate them for that, too. We pay them for their overtime. But for the entire district, the total number of cases that they have themselves identified and worked out for separate spreadsheets, we had 40 active cases. Of those 40 active cases that the school system has provided, 38 of those, based on our work, have been students. Now, this is from the start of the school year to the present. So we're not saying that 38 to 40 are still at home, still in isolation or in quarantine, because again, isolation ends in 10 days, pending that their last day is 24 hours without support to keep, have no fever. On the average number of cases, when you consider it per schools, that's, the average number of cases per school is 6.7 cases per school. Some are a little bit higher than six. The junior high had 11 cases. East Chester had 11 cases that were worked up by their school nurses. The high school had six. Middle school had four. Jax Creek had one. And West Chester had seven. Some of those cases, like I said, 38 of them were students, two of them were staff. The staff cases that were active in the trends that we have led to more contact tracing. Some of the contacts, and let me get into that, the total number of contacts, which is the big number, these are the ones that are within an active case, six feet for 15 minutes or more in totality. And of our total number of contacts for the district wide, we had 411 students or staff contacted as a, as a contact that would need to quarantine. And the average number of contacts per school per case was 8.7. On the highest end, we had the junior high having 178 contacts. Given their 11 cases, that was approximately 16.2 contacts per incident. The other high was East Chester. It had 85 contacts per 11 or 7.7. But again, the contacts, we saw a heightened number of contacts with junior high and high school, but you have to remember that one student is transfer, or moving from class to class to class, where your lower grades, your middle school and less, your lower grades, are more centralized, or they stay in that one or two classrooms for the, for the majority of their school day. So it does usually manifest into less contacts. I had conversations today with our school nurses. Mr. Shane and I had a visit with them because of all the new district guidelines that are being provided almost at a daily basis. And we entertained with them, the school nurses, here's what's happening in some of our neighboring districts, and we kind of outlined what we had read. And of the choices, and again, of the choices that we had mentioned specifically, where we were, I was expecting to hear our school nurses to support like one specific district who has, if everybody, students and staff, wear their mask throughout the school day. Again, still choice because of the Governor's Executive Order 84. But if they chose to wear a mask at one of our neighboring school districts, then if there is an active case discovered at the school, those that are in contact around them would not have to quarantine if they wear their mask properly. Now, that is one district, the one I'm thinking of in particular, has had success with that. Another school district and about four others that I'm aware of are no longer offering support to the local health department to contact trace. It is the responsibility of the health department to do it. That is, the state law mandates that. But we, like last year, chose, and we even this year, chose to assist them in that effort, just like we did last year, because we realized that if the health department alone was given the task to contact all these people, even though they do have staff devoted to do this, they're only making one call attempt. So if it's a call attempt to your, for your child, and they make one attempt, and you just hang up on them because it looks like an uncommon, unfamiliar number, they're not calling you back, not until the next day, maybe. So we felt, like and still do, that our school nurses can work in partnership with their health department to continue to offer the support with the tracing. In both of those circumstances, where these other districts and neighboring districts to us have chosen to take these different paths, our school nurses support that we keep things as we're doing. They felt like that the, the expectation that students as well as staff would be able to, as one district has, wear their mask properly, would be as what the regional director of the health department said, Ms. Emily Rushing, that is a risky situation. Because again, what we have realized in Chester, and some of our nurses echoed this, that a contact trace, even after they've been home for a few days, are coming up with an active case themselves days later. So it's not like it was last year where you saw very little, if any, of situations to where an active case at school led to another active case at school. We have not got enough data to support that that's not happening now, and it has the tendency, or can happen, even days later. We've had staff, because of their contact with, with others in the family, that they were doing well, almost to the very end of their quarantine time, and then days later, almost to the point where they're ready to return to school, and they became active. So we were not surprised, but I would say this, on behalf of all the school nurses, they have a hard job right now contacting all these families, and it is a difficult conversation. I was part of them last year, I know personally. Some of you are part of them now, or have been. But they said consistently, they want to keep doing what we're doing, recognizing that our efforts to contact trace have kept the number of kids lower about what this pandemic could do or could impact Chester County. Because again, if you just accept that everybody with a mask worn properly will keep you from being contact traced, it'd make their job easier. But they, they did not choose that path. They wanted to continue to do what we're doing now, feeling like it's effective. It's still an option that any and all can wear their mask. We do not shame, we do not ridicule those who choose to do so. It is a conscientious decision that each person needs to make for them or their family. And whether or not to get the vaccination, again, the TDAH guideline says if you're vaccinated, then you don't have to quarantine. That's still out there, and that's still something that we would respect. But again, it's not a mandate from anybody at any school that you have to get the vaccination. It is still make the best choice for you or your family.
Troy, do these other districts have mask monitors? How do they, how do they keep up with who's wearing masks and who's not?
I did not ask them that specific question. So I don't know, Mr. Norris.
Any other discussion or comments?
I've got a comment. I think that, I think we need to back our nurses. I think we need to keep the. I think we need to keep the course. That, that's kept us in school, cases down. If our nurses recommend it, and they're working overtime, that's what I think. I, I don't like to wear a mask, I don't. And we're not forcing anybody to wear a mask. That's a option. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And nobody is being punished if they wear a mask. They're not be, they're not set off in the corner or anything, are they?
Correct.
Okay. So if a parent wants their child to wear a mask, wear a mask. If they don't, let's keep doing our practices of social distancing when we can, the safety procedures that we've got in place. It scares me, too. It scares me, too. So, and I know it does most everybody else. But just saying as safe as we can is, and like Stephen Maurice said, we need to stay in school. Last year, when it started, I was one of those people that didn't know. You remember that?
Yes, sir.
And it was the right decision.
We asked, and I'll say one thing, just to kind of piggyback what you said about for the students. I asked the school nurses today, do we have knowledge of any of our students who have had to go to more severe medical treatment because of an active case? There's only one that actually went to the emergency room, but that was because their symptoms started to come on them on a Sunday when the clinics were closed. But that's the only evidence that they had, there's been any, and again, I was just talking about Chester County. I'm sure you can find somebody in the state or somebody in the nation that it's, you know, has had some serious issues to have to deal with. But for us, we have not had anybody for any severe case as far as a student with contact.
Could a student potentially have the option to wear a mask and not quarantine?
That's, that's the issue that the one district offered for them. And the question that came up is not the, didn't put the way that Norris said it, but that was the question. How are we going to check to ensure that that student kept their mask on? Because it does say you got to wear it properly.
That's the key word, properly.
That's properly. And again, not as a chin strap, I've seen them all, you know. Even for adults, as we start to slide down, you know, the, the expectation is that you wear them covering the nose and the mouth. That's the guidelines from the CDC and the TDAH backs up. So that's the issue being, that was the question that the school nurses had today. Who's going to police that? So that when they come to us, or if a parent says, my son or my daughter has been wearing their mask, the parent is only speaking on behalf of what the child's telling them, because the parent is not walking them down every classroom, seeing them operate all day long.
Any other comments, questions?
Shane, has, has anybody got any comment out here? Anybody?
The question that's going to be brought up, that hasn't been brought up. If you're giving parents the choice of whether their child wants to wear a mask, why is the parent not having the choice of their child to be quarantined? That they understand that they're, they can diagnose symptoms. And if you're telling me that it's my choice whether my kid wants to wear a mask or not, the conversation we've received is, why can't I make the decision whether my child misses it? Through the things that they look to when they're sitting here. If you're telling me it's my choice, why can it not be my choice? It's, that's a hard question to answer. When we're saying, it is, yes, it is your choice, you know you can't make it.
I got you.
That's a tough conversation.
It is.
The school nurses did mention today, they would like to see, like we did last year, the, the parents, they're, they're seeing a lot of parents let their children out with symptoms, and the parents doing that checklist each morning, again, getting back in that routine to really help, help the school staff, you know, not letting them come to school with symptoms, because they are seeing that, they, they told us daily. So start, it's starting at home with that checklist to make, do that wellness check.
Since it's open, I would support that. When schools started back up, I was extremely surprised it was not continue doing that checklist every day with a parent, taking the temperature, signing off, no signal.
They said as far as what the community could do, the great, greatest, the greatest help, that would exactly be it, providing that health check to their child before they ever arrive at the school building.
I had mentioned to Dr. Maurice before the meeting got started that we are going to go back and purchase more of those posters, signs that we had used last year. Some schools, I know the junior highs got theirs posted on some of their doorways. But we're going to make sure that we replenish our stock of those signs posted around the schools to ensure, and we will communicate that out, about the well checks, the necessary part. And again, it's inconvenient when everybody's trying to go. It just gives that extra layer of protection, knowing that before that child comes into the threshold of the school, that mother or father or caregiver has already proven at least some evidence that that child did not leave the house with symptoms.
Do they take their temperature? Is that, is that one of the things that they?
That's, well, one of the questions, as you recall, is like if you've had a temperature of 104. So again, to take that, to be able to say yes or no they don't, obviously no they don't, if they're coming to school, then they would have to check their temperatures to know that for sure.
Anyone else? And just for, I did look today before the meeting, just to give us a point of reference. On this date in 2020, where we're at 38 student cases now, we were at 30 last year at this time. So we're not far apart. So procedures seem to be, you know, working, even with this variant affecting the kids a little more than last year.
With a, with a school events, was that something that we need to start monitoring temperatures and all that again?
Well, I had a conversation, I think I had it with, no, it was with Brandon, is who I had it with. You know, last school year, the T double S double A was in front of all of this with very strict stringent guidelines about who could go, what would be the requirements at the door for all the T double S double A sanctioned sports. They don't have that this year. Now, we can still do the signage, but with the expectations that people are coming in. Of course, an outdoor event is also a better event to deal with the contagious nature of this. But there has been almost nothing said from the T double S double A as far as, just like last year. It's not the same.
Any other comments? All right, if not, is there any other business that needs to come before the board tonight? All right, if not, I'll remind you, our next meeting will be scheduled for Thursday, September 23rd. And next month, we will be at the campus of East Chester Elementary School. So we look forward to that on the 23rd of September. With that being said, is there a motion that we adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
So meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.